Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $289,722.82. Payrolls liability, payroll liabilities for September 19th, 2017, in the amount of $226,672.22, for a total of $516,316,394.84.
Second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions on the bills? Okay, the only question that I had was for claim number 26355. And it's on page nine. It's for the overhead door company for 285. And it's the install of a mail slot for Hertz. Can you guys tell me about that one?
Yes, there is a, due to the limited hours at the airport terminal, they, we had received complaints from Hertz customers with regard to their inability to drop off vehicles after hours or during the day during times when it's closed. So they did install a mail slot box so they could drop their keys into a secure location. Even though Hertz may or may not, we may or may not continue to extend the contract, the booth is set up for any other car dealership or rental company that were to come up there. So they, they opted to go ahead and put in a mail slot for them.
Okay, so shouldn't that be Hertz responsibility, though, to be paying for that, since that is, they're the ones maintaining that right now? And that's for the convenience for their customers?
Well, yeah, go ahead, Kyle.
Madam Chairwoman, the reason why the city took that expense on is because we leased the space and it's our building. And like Ms. Harris said, we anticipate that to be a rental spot moving forward. And so as owners of the building, that's why we took on that expense.
I guess I'm just confused, because they're not willing to stay open early, they're not willing to stay late. So it's an inconvenience to our constituents, to the people that are flying in. I mean, it's a massive inconvenience. And so everybody's complaining about it. And if they wanted to better their business and have better customer service, I guess if that's something that they should be doing, I kind of would like to pull that and then we can discuss that further. And then we'll go from there.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
At the airport board meeting that we did have Hertz present, and I think the city did agree to put that in at the airport board meeting.
Without discussion at all?
Well, the airport board approved putting the slot in for Hertz, which would be there.
I guess I'm just struggling, because they're not working with us right now.
And I guess, I would agree.
Yet we're going to be the one who needs the bill.
But no matter, I think no matter who we end up with there, I think they're going to need that anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And that would probably be part of what we have to supply. We supply them the desk, we supply them the, you know, whatever. So, again, not a very big amount, so I don't think it's a huge deal. But I do understand your point. But I think no matter who we get to be in that position, if Hertz does not, then we would need to have a mail slot there for keys after hours drops, so.
Can we, can we still pull it, though? And then both discuss? Can we still do that, please?
Madam Chairman, I believe that's the discretion of the committee.
That's good. All right, thank you.
Just bring it up in front of the council when we get to that.
That'd be fine, we can separate that item out.
Yep, let's do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And then, is there anything further?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, meeting adjourned at 6:50.
... which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Our loving heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to gather together as servants of this great city. And we are grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this great city and to be able to serve those around us. We ask you to please soften our minds and our hearts to be able to allow the things that are discussed tonight to go in and that we'll be able to make the decisions that are needed. We are thankful for the moisture that we're receiving, and we are thankful for everything that thou has given us. And we ask you this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Godey.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I'm present, declare that we have a quorum for this evening's meeting. Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Carol Anderson, and it's time to talk about snow removal. I was told by somebody who moved here from the east that they were surprised that we plowed snow to the center of the street, because back east, they didn't do it that way, because it was dangerous. When you come to an intersection, you couldn't see over the snow. Well, this last year, just to prove that one method of snow removal isn't any better than the other, they're both imperfect, whether you move it to the center or move it to the curb. I had a woman come up to me after reading some of my letters to the editor, and she said, "Carol, I totally agree with you about your issue of snow removal, because when they plow the snow to the curb, I go up and I have to drive out with my car in the traffic lane before I can see whether or not there's traffic coming." She said, "It's plain dangerous, and I don't like to drive in that." And so I'm going to talk about the two imperfect methods of snow removal. One, moving to the center of the street, one moving it to the curb. One is tolerable, and the other is just plain miserable. We had a big snowstorm this last December that dumped a lot of snow on the area. And apparently, there were enough people that came in to talk to Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Weaver, that they decided that they would enlist Mr. Steve Peck down at the ranger to maybe explain some of the methods of snow removal and take some of the heat off the two gentlemen. Mr. Peck wrote an article that cussed at snow. And I responded with a letter to the editor, and I'd like to read a portion of it into the record. When I visited with, this is quoting from the letter, "When I visited with Public Works Director Kyle Butterfield last year about snow removal, one of the many reasons I told him that I did not like this present method of plowing snow to the curb is that I consider it to be a very subtle form of double taxation." He thought that utterly absurd. But I continued, "Our taxes have steadily increased over the years. Is the city going to lower the tax rate for or reimburse the individuals for their time and effort for clearing their sidewalks and driveway of the snow that the city has dumped on them?" Mr. Butterfield smiled and quietly said, "I think you know the answer to that question. We do not pay taxes to the city to have the city dump snow on our sidewalks and across our driveways for us to remove. We pay taxes to the city to enable the city to help us, not hinder us." In the 40-plus years that my husband and I lived here during the time that they plowed snow to the center of the street, we never had that problem. Not once did we clean up after the city. And we managed quite well. Doug Novotny also responded, and I'm going to quote a portion of his letter into the record. "My property is at the east end of Riverton Road, next to the old cemetery. I have rental property adjacent. I have had older people, young, and disabled, and I do believe that they need to be treated better than they have been during these snowstorms. The city has bladed Riverview and each time has left the snow piled up in front of the rental. If I have a renter needing to get out in an emergency, that renter cannot because of the large snow pile. Well, if they can't get out of their home, they can't get into their home. We never had that problem when the snow was bladed to the center of the street. We had free access. I couldn't always turn to the left, but I could always turn to the right. And sometimes, when I came and wasn't thinking, I had to go around a couple of extra blocks because I couldn't turn into my driveway. But I always got in." Dan Wimp also responded. And I'm going to quote a sentence from his letter. "The city can push the snow against our vehicles so we can't get to work. I drive on Sunset and Broadway and Pershing and North Eight West a lot, and there are a lot of vehicles parked on those streets. And I wonder how many other people got snowed in, or, you know, snowed in by the city because the city plowed snow against their vehicles? And how many other people had to shovel their vehicles out in order to get to where they were working or where they were going?" But let's look, take a little bit of a look at this. Here you have a vehicle that's parked legally against the curb, parallel parked, and then it snows. The city comes along and blades snow against the vehicle to open up the traffic lane, the two traffic lanes. So Mr. Wimp comes out and sees that he has to shovel his vehicle out. Well, where's he going to stand? He's going to stand in the traffic lane. There's no other place for him to stand. You go from the curb to the vehicle to the windrow to the traffic lane. He's going to stand in the traffic lane to shovel his vehicle out. Where's he going to put the snow when he shovels it? Can't put it back on the street where he got it, that's against the code. So he has to take it up on the grass. Hopefully, it's just across the curb, but it's, if it's like our yard, he has to take it across the curb and across the sidewalk and put it on his lawn. Here's a man just trying to get to work, and the city plows him in. He's trying to get to work so he can pay his bills, which include his tax bill, to pay the city, to plow the street, that plows him in. I can't think of a more miserable vicious circle than that. Again, I wonder how many other people were, were plowed in. All these imposi, none of that happened when, when we, the city plowed snow to the center of the street. It just didn't happen. But all of these impositions on those of us who live on the plowed streets and, and the pedestrians who walk sidewalks on those plowed streets, we have a lot of pedestrians that come down Sunset. They just didn't happen when, when you plowed snow to the center. But those impositions on all those people come at a cost to the city, too. When you plow snow to the center of the street, you go down the street once to remove the snow. When you plow snow to the curb, you go down the street twice to remove the snow. Costs more money to go down the street twice than it does once. It takes more time to go down the street twice than it does once. And time is a factor. If you go back to Mr. Novotny's letter, they said that, he said, "I called the city and was told that they would take care of this issue as soon as possible." Well, that's a built-in time factor there. So if you're going to spend time going down the street twice, that takes the care, takes away from servicing the, getting things done. You have a wonderful piece of equipment that's customized to pick up the snow down the center of the street. It takes the snow right from the street level and blows it right directly into a dump truck. Mr. Butterfield tells me that that cannot be used against the curb, because it's destructive to the curb. And then I was also told a couple of times that they can't use this piece of equipment because it needs to have the windrow of snow a certain way. It has to be groomed a certain way, and it has to be formed a certain way. I told my husband that. And he looked at me with a certain look and let out a snort. And I've lived with him long enough to be able to translate that into saying, "Well, that's all right to tell some old lady, but you sure wouldn't tell that to the mechanical engineer who designed that piece of equipment, nor would you tell it to the salesperson who sold it." And as I got to thinking about it, I thought, "Yeah, that, that story just doesn't wash." It doesn't wash at all with the experience that I've had, because we lived here in Riverton when they got that piece of equipment. And boy, did they like it. It replaced the front-end loader that they were using. And they used it for a number of years. And I never saw anybody out with a measuring stick to make sure it was just the right size, or a grooming implement to make sure it was just the right shape. I never saw any of that. They just got busy and they loaded it, the snow onto the dump truck. Now, because they can't use that piece, you use it down on, on Main Street. I've seen it down there, and I've watched. And they get busy and they plow the snow and they load it with that, not giving any thought to how it's shaped or anything else. And it's a keen, slick piece of equipment. But now, because they can't use that against the curb, they're using a front-end loader. That was used before you got that specialized piece of equipment. A front-end loader has its place. But when you stop to think about it, it goes backward as much as it goes forward. You go forward to get a load, you back up, you go forward to dump it in the dump truck, you back up, you go forward to get another load, you back up. It goes backward as much as it goes forward. Costs as much money to go backward as it does forward. And that increases the cost to the city. That specialized piece of equipment just moves forward, never goes backward. It pauses long enough for the full dump truck to move out, and an empty one to move in its place, then it proceeds forward. So it takes a whole lot less time than, than the front-end loader to go forward. I, I just don't have anything good to say about this.
Oh, Mrs. Anderson, you know, we have a work session scheduled for next Tuesday night to deal with snow removal. We're going to spend the whole night talking about that.
Well, I'm about ready to wrap up.
Okay. Well, if you want to come back and talk to us again, that'll be fine. If not, we'll have your remarks, and we know what your position on this issue is.
Well, I hope you know my position, but...
We know, we know what your position is.
Well, I, but I wanted to present some facts. I wanted to present some facts to you so you could think about it. And I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Here we are. Yes, I'm Reggie Dawcom, here in town here, of course. But when I heard the agenda this morning, I thought, "Hey, wait a minute. I need to get up here and talk to him a little bit." But I know the issues of the outside, inside. It's a challenge either way. But the thing that I wanted to mention is particularly downtown and, well, North Federal, probably West Maine, too, from what I observed, but especially downtown. And this last spring, the last big storm we had, most of the folks did pretty good. But there's a few folks, especially on the corner lots. I, I just can't comprehend the apathy, the indifference, the unfeeling and uncaring about this safety and those of us, those of us that have to walk. There's some folks, they will, how can I illustrate here? Oh, all right. They, they clean their ramps, you know, the ramps down to the crosswalk. And they have cleaned, they will clean right down to the edge of the curb, the edge of the street on the curb. And they won't do a kernel or a snowflake more than that. And that, I can't comprehend that, because, well, we walk there, too. And I know the last, well, the last several winters, that I personally have walked uptown, well, down to, down to, let's see, Bank of West is what, on Second Street there? That's Second. A lot of times, I walked uptown, that's Second, and we live in 11th block, last 11 blocks. And I walked up here and I've cleaned a lot of the corners of the, of the corner lots, making a path out into the crosswalk so, so that we can... a path out into the crosswalk so that we can walk safely. And I've talked, I have talked to a number of the corner, four corners, and some of them have understood. And they have been kind enough to implement that in cleaning, making that pathway through the windrow out into the crosswalk. So those of us that walk, handicap, and those that use wheelchairs and so on, and those of us that are having a little harder trouble seeing and use our white cane to help keep us find things we maybe don't see and from what little we do see. And that is really appreciated. But there's some that are just, you shake your head at the apathy, right to the edge, "Oh, that's the city's responsibility, and we can't do that." But I'm just wondering that last one, they didn't do it last year, the radio station here, KVW. But the year before, when Ray, yeah, Ray, Ray was here, he played that PSA, Public Service Announcement, that, what do you call it? "I'm a lawsuit waiting to happen." Maybe some of you remember that. They didn't do that last year. But that is good. It's a good warning. And I asked him, and he got me a copy of that in print. And I shared it with a number of folks and out in the residential as well. And one or two maybe got the message. But I also added this, added that, added that, what I mentioned to it. I can see to read it here. That, I didn't bring my, forgot to bring my little helper. And then at the end of this, I added this, typed it on here, and please, folks, this includes the sidewalk across your driveway and across the alley and on the corners, making, you know, the street crossings. And we walk there, too. But I don't know if there's something that can be, you've been talking, talking a lot about cleaning up the codes and that, and there were things, ordinances and that. And I just, I thought of it last year, too, but I made up my mind this fall that I would get up here and say something and see if something couldn't be worded into the thing about the sidewalks already to include, encourage the people to make a path through the, if you do the windrow to the side again. Make a path through that so that we can walk safely. And I know once last year, I came across the street expecting to be able to find the sidewalk and come across, the sun was shining bright and aglow, and it's harder for me to see. And I was out there trying to, trying to find it, trying to find the sidewalk, the pathway through. And it was just so frustrating. And finally ended up stumbling across through, through the thing. But I did come up later on with my shovel and cleaned the pathway through. And, but if people, if we get out there right away, shortly after they plow it out, it's not too hard to make a path through there. And I know, well, I've always done this in the parking lot in front of my house. I, yeah, it's a little extra work, but I keep, I clean that off myself and throw it up into, up into the yard. And I know this spring, we had about a five-foot pile there, but at least the wife has a clean place to park the car and we don't have to deal with all that slush in the spring and that, and the water has a place to run. But the corner lots, and like I mentioned, you're, and I've done, need to talk to maybe a few more of the corner lot owners to see if they would be more considerate. But if, I just thought that, mention this and see if something couldn't be worked more in, worked a little bit more into the sidewalk ordinance to encourage the clean out, clean out into the crosswalk. We walk there, too.
Thank you, Reggie, for coming. We, I have witnessed your efforts with the snow shovel and seeing you and John out there pushing snow and trying to clear things up. And so I appreciate your willingness to put a little energy into it. And we understand your circumstances. And of course, we're going to talk about this next week, actually. It was our goal. And so we are going to try to figure something out so that we can provide as good a service as possible for the citizens of Riverton.
Yeah, would you like a copy or two of this, of this lawsuit thing waiting to happen?
Sure. Give that to Kyle and he can.
All right, I heard you there.
Okay. Thank you for coming. We're on to the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, September 5, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, September 11, 2017, special council meeting. Approval of the minutes, September 11, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, September 12, 2017, special council meeting. Approval of the minutes, September 12, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, September 19, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, September 19, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, October 3, 2017, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for October 3, 2017. Adoption of ordinance number 17-021 on second reading, Title VIII revision, by title only. An ordinance amending Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.12, Garbage Collection and Disposal, to revise sections 8.12.020, fees for sanitation services, 8.12.210B, placement of containers, 8.12.250, deposit of refuse, 8.12.290, monthly payment, 8.12.320, failure to pay of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Adoption of ordinance number 17-022 on second reading, repeal special municipal officer by title only. An ordinance amending Title II, Administration and Personnel, to repeal Chapter 2.30, Special Municipal Officer of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor. So recommendations from the finance committee for, first, we have a review of a claim. It would be the overhead door in the amount of $285. We wanted just to discuss with the council just a little bit about it. It's not the amount that is bothersome to me. It's the fact that we're putting in a mail slot for their convenience, not so much when they're not really helping us. I guess I'm just really struggling with that concept behind it. When I talked to Mike, he said that, I guess, the airport board, that they had agreed that we would pay it, which I completely understand. Do you remember how long ago that was, that you guys had that meeting by chance?
Not exactly.
You know how long?
Several months ago.
Mr. Chairman, that meeting and the discussion was held, I believe, at the April Airport Board meeting or May Airport Board meeting.
So then why is it just now coming in October? Sorry, Your Honor. I guess I'm just really confused because, like, there's been nothing, I mean, we're kind of struggling with Hertz anyways, and I just kind of feel like we're more or less doing them a favor for their customers when they're not willing to do anything for our constituents or for our customers. And so we have people flying in and it's, what have they been doing this entire time with their keys?
I don't have an answer for that.
So now, all of a sudden, the city and our taxpayers are going to have to pay for a mail slot because they don't want to stay open? If they want to run a business, they feel like they needed to do something. It's not the city's responsibility to make sure that their business.
Would you like to make a motion?
I don't exactly know how to do this, so yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to move that we not pay that bill?
I would love to move that we not pay this bill.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move in second, that we not pay this bill. Discussion.
Oh, yeah, I need to do that, huh? Thanks. So, as I was stating, I just am really struggling with the fact that we're helping them when they're not willing to help us. I mean, stay open longer and make sure that your doors are open, you wouldn't need a mail slot.
Let me ask a couple of questions.
Okay, that would be great.
All right. So how much does Hertz pay us every month to rent space in the airport?
Your Honor, I don't have that figure off the top of my head. We'll have to look that up.
Bea, looks like maybe she does.
I believe their rent payment is just slightly over $200 for the counter, and then we also receive concessions. So we receive a percentage based on the number of vehicles that they rent out at any given period of time. So that could vary.
Okay. All right.
Pardon me. I have to get that. I don't have it.
And when we had two rental car companies at the airport, did they both pay the same kind of?
Your Honor, that is correct. They were charged the exact same fee structure.
Okay. So do we, at some point in time, did we build facilities, you know, put up the counter and space and that type of thing for them, or is they just have like a desk on the corner? I'm not familiar with what they're, where they're.
Your Honor, the Hertz concession is built into the building, so when the building was constructed, it included a counter and an office space for ground transportation. It is along, if you enter and you're looking down towards the cafe, it's along the left side of the terminal. There are currently three office locations with counters that accommodate a similar operation. Right now, TSA leases some of those and then Hertz leases the other.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is it customary, is it customary for the owner of the building to provide the facilities necessary to rent the space to somebody else?
Your Honor, yes, in this instance, as far as accommodating a space for this type of business, we provide the space through the terminal building. And as far as the drop-off box, we feel that that would accommodate any ground transportation company, not just Hertz. And it's less about dropping off vehicles during normal operating hours. It's for the off-hours when the terminal is closed and the city does not offer it to be open to anyone. And so in order to accommodate those that utilize the terminal that travel in Fremont County, it's better to have those keys dropped off. Otherwise, when it's off-hours overnight, what's happened is those keys are left in the vehicles or when they are returned during an off-hour that Hertz isn't there, they're just left on the counter. And so it was installed to provide a secure place for those keys to be returned once a customer brings back a car.
Mike?
Again, I was at the Airport Board meeting last spring, and, you know, the Airport Board did discuss this, and there were people end up leaving their keys in the car or under the floor mat or whatever, and there was concern that cars would get stolen if people figured out that the keys were in the cars up there in the middle of the night. And so the Airport Board suggested that we do this, and I think it is, and again, it's for the after-hours stuff, because if they can get in the terminal, I think Hertz does have a drop box inside. I think if they're not present, I can't remember exactly. But again, it's not as big of a concern when the keys get dropped in and, you know, thrown on the counter and they lock up the building, nobody's going to steal the keys and go run off with a car. And so, again, the Airport Board did approve or suggest that we put this drop box scenario in so that the cars at the airport would be more secure and there was a place to drop the keys so that the concessioner could get them in the morning and go out and do whatever they need to do to those cars, check them in or whatever, so.
And, Your Honor, just to provide explanation as to why there was a delay, we wanted to wait until the new fiscal year started so that the building maintenance line item for the terminal had sufficient funds. Again, it's only a few hundred dollars, but at the end of the fiscal year, we wanted to make sure we did it in the new fiscal year when we had appropriate budget funds.
Call for a vote.
No.
All those, all those in favor of the motion to not pay the bill, say aye.
I'm good now.
All those opposed to the motion to not pay the bill, say aye.
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 Ayes have it, we're going to pay the bill.
Okay.
Now we're back to the consent agenda.
Okay. Then recommendations from the finance committee for bills to be paid in the amount of $289,722.82 and payroll liabilities for 9/19 of 17 in the amount of $226,672.22 for a total of
Thank you, Your Honor. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The move in seconded, that we approve consent and discussion on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes signed, the motion passes. The next item is contract for services, quarterly update, children's advocacy project, Our Recreation, Riverton Chamber of Commerce, and pause. Children's advocacy?
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me back.
Sure.
And I want to say thank you, Your Mayor, and for the support you provided for this current fiscal year throughout the next year. So it's, we appreciate a lot, especially with the tightening of the budget, I know that everyone is having, so we appreciate all the support. We were lucky enough to get some support from several counties, so since we provide services to so many different law enforcement and DFS agencies, so I just want to say I appreciate that. I provided a report to you guys, I think you all got a copy of it, just to give a rundown of the stats, just for your, the little left-hand column, just for you guys to know, that's fiscal year 17. I do the same report for our Board of Directors, and they wanted a comparison from the previous year. So fortunately, we're there, but unfortunately, we're, you know, we're still busy. We've seen 20 more cases this quarter as compared to last year. So this year, we've seen 91 kids come to our doors, the majority of them, I think it was about 63, I forgot to write that number down when I was adding them, but are sexual abuse cases. And I know out of Fremont County, the six cases that we've had over the quarter, the breakdown, just so you guys know, two were from the PD, three were from Lander PD, and then one was from the sheriff's office. And all of them are sexual abuse cases as well. So unfortunately, our need is still there to help those kiddos and try to help the investigation process as well. We're still providing therapy to the kids if they need it. And my attendance at the meeting last spring was kind of helpful because I met one of the counselors from the local counseling center. I'm sorry, I forgot the name of it. But she has, we visited for a little bit when we walked. for a little bit when we walked out, and she's able to inform us when their therapists become trained in the trauma-focused therapy, which is a specific type of therapy that's really good for the trauma that the kids that we see, so that when we do see a child from this area, we can make the right referrals to a counselor for them in their own home community. So that was, that was helpful. I want to just reach out and say, I'm not sure who it was, but the National Children's Alliance, we are nationally accredited, so we have a lot of communication on that level, and then we're part of a Midwest region peer review process as well. So one of our interviewers is actually able, she's one of the ones that they, they have on their website that helps with peer reviews, and they do teleconference style. We also participate just internally in peer reviews, and what that is, is they evaluate, of course, with all the releases and everything, but they show interviews that they have done to try to get feedback from other professionals in the several state region, just so we can kind of continuously improve the interviews that we do. But NCA reached out to me and said that someone here in Riverton had gone to Huntsville to get the same training in the forensic interviewing process, and so she had asked my permission to have them reach out to me if they wanted some help or advice or anything like that. And I, she didn't give me the name, but if there is someone, and she, she said, I may be confused on the area, Wyoming's big is what she, because she was from Washington or something, because the person had reached out to them about accreditation and things. So we just finished our site review for accreditation, and so we've gone through all kinds of those things, so I just wanted to throw it out there that if, if you guys do in fact have someone locally doing that and would like some advice, feedback, things like that, we can certainly help if you want to have her reach out, or him, reach out to us. So I think, you know, that's the biggest thing, we're just trying to make sure the kids get the best quality interviews, so that you don't have to repeat the interviews, and it's just hard for the kids. So I want to make sure you guys were aware of that. I think, you know, that's, we had one, one of our interviewers was on maternity leave for the last three months, so she came back yesterday, so we're happy to have her back, especially since we've had more interviews, we've been pretty busy with the ones we've had, so it's nice to have her back. Other than that, you know, we're, we're keeping on going, we're trying to cut costs as much as possible on little things, just like everyone else, so, so again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Just a clarification on my part, we are still taking children from here to Casper for those interviews?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Mike?
Your Honor, I don't know who might know the number, but what is our contribution to the-
$3,000 for the-
$3,000?
Yes.
And then I assume you get contributions from Lander and Fremont County also?
We get contributions from Fremont County. We have not gotten Lander contributions in several years, from my understanding, I just started, I've been here a year now, well, a year and a month or so, so when I was looking back, Lander has not, I reached out to them, and they said they don't do those kind of services, so I'm trying to set up a meeting with, with more of the people involved, and, you know, we have one investigator that comes down a lot, and he values what we do and said he'd help, but he said, he also said, "Good luck with that," because they just aren't, I guess, real big on supporting those, just much outside of the community, and he's a little confused, he's been trying to get that to happen as well. But Fremont County does, and you guys, and Big Horn Basin, there are, we get funds from Big Horn County and Carbon County.
How much does Fremont County give you?
I want to say $5,000. Commerce, or no, yeah, Commerce County gave us $5,000, City of Douglas gives us $2,000. Trying to visualize my budget to go down. Glen Rock usually gives us about $1,500, so, yeah, so it's kind of a spread out, like I said, we had 17 different counties that we served last year, so, so those amounts help us tremendously when it all adds up. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks for making, thanks for making the trip our direction.
Absolutely, I'll do it anytime you guys need me to.
All right, good.
As long as I can get here.
Good, thank you. Okay, Our Recreation.
Thank you guys for having us, and I know I'm going to be short, because we'll be back in, for the year-end with our big presentation, but I wanted to thank you guys for your ongoing support for the recreation programs of the city, and I gave you guys our report, so really, if you guys have any questions, you can shout it my way, but we have had a busy quarter, and I know I'm supposed to focus on the quarter, but we had a busy summer, and July was our busiest July we've ever had. We offered the most programs and had the highest participation, which was really exciting, because usually July, it's a little ho-hum, so this was awesome July. Today, I just, I think our arrangement with the city is so unique. I was at the Wyoming State Parks and Recs Conference today. I chaired the sports, well, they actually changed it today to programming in general, but prior to today, it's been the sports programming. Chair the state board meeting of that, and I was talking to Pinedale, and I know I've shared this with you guys before, but Pinedale Population 2000 has 11 people on their rec staff, one of those is an aquatics person. So I feel pretty proud of what we offer to our community with just two people on our staff. So thank you guys for the ongoing support, and we're always looking for new ideas. One interesting statistic is we had our oldest participant this fall is our, is 86 years old, and our youngest is 14 months, so we've got a pretty big span of people that we serve. What questions can I answer for you guys?
No questions.
I can't believe it.
That, isn't that amazing? So in Pinedale, they must, they must run the program through their rec board, or-
They have.
County rec board?
Yeah, well, I think it's city, they have a fabulous rec center.
Yeah, that's, that's because one mill of property tax over there generates about $6 million.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, there's no question about that.
Yeah.
They just don't have very many people that serve.
Instead of, instead of, instead of five mills in Riverton generating $370,000.
I know, they are kind of spoiled, right?
Yeah, yeah, they are kind of spoiled, they can have, they can have a really nice pool.
Yes, they can, and their climbing wall, when you come in, I don't know if any of you have seen their rec center, but their climbing wall is kind of their showcase, and it's pretty fancy. But we're looking forward to not snow removal, but ice skating, so that's-
Ice skating.
Ice skating will be coming up in the next, you know, in this-
That'll, that'll be great, that has been a wonderful program the last couple of years, hasn't it?
It has been, it's been a lot of fun.
Yeah, yeah, I've got, I've got grandkids in Casper who come over here to skate.
That makes us so happy to hear that.
Okay, so-
And we, we did have inquiries across the state last year about Thermopolis was considering doing one, so I think the idea is catching on, just because it's fun.
Sure, sure. Well, good, we appreciate the effort that you've made, and, and we appreciate the partnership.
You bet.
We have been able to join together with CWC and have a robust recreation program for Riverton.
I think it's, you know, we're not usually impressed with other people's rec programs, because we feel like we're doing a really, I mean, our range of programming is pretty good.
Very broad, and very broad.
I have brochures for you guys, I mentioned in the letter that they were included, but I emailed the letter to-
Okay.
So you can't email the brochure, but one, one thing I did want to mention, we did implement a new online system this summer, and it allowed us to take online registration. So if you haven't checked out our new website, it's, it's pretty cool.
Good.
And that was all designed in-house, we've got a really fabulous, Jamie was not able to be here tonight, but she's got, she's pretty skilled in the digital marketing stuff.
What's the web address?
It's www.Rerecreation, so two Rs there, Rerecreation.com.
Link in your letter.
It's in here if you want to grab one of these.
Okay.
Saying for the viewing public.
Oh, yes.
For the viewing public.
Dot Rerecreation.com.
Good job, thank you.
I know there's probably at least two or three out there that are watching this.
Okay, there's two or three.
All right, so we thank you guys for your continued support, and we'll give you a bigger update with the year-
Okay.
-numbers at the end.
Thanks, Mary.
All right, thank you guys.
You bet, you bet. Riverton Chamber of Commerce, Jim Davis.
Well, this is pretty much the same report I've handed to you for, believe it or not, almost 10 years now. But there is one notation on here that hasn't been on the past reports, and it's just the statistics of the inputs that we take, and the stuff we hand out, and the information we give out, but at the bottom of the report this year, it says, "We were open the weekend before the eclipse, and Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we had 213 people come through the Chamber of Commerce, looking for information about where to view it from, and events that were going on in the community." So I think we had a very successful-
It was, it was a great, it was a great couple of days in Riverton, wasn't it?
It was, it really was. So any questions about the report, you've all seen it before, the numbers just changed a little bit, they kind of stay about the same. Ironically enough, we didn't actually have a great influx of, you know, requests, it was still kind of the same amount. Last year, it was a little bit lower than this, because I remember checking last year's quarterly report, it was about 3,900 requests, and it was 43 this time, so I'm sure the eclipse probably-
May have helped bump that up some.
Yeah.
Okay, and then do you have any, do you separate out the online looks, you know, people coming in and looking around on the website versus-
Our website doesn't really let us do that, but we're already in the process-
So this is, this is the written material?
This is the written material, email requests.
Email requests and printed material.
It's walk-ins, phone calls, direct phone calls, email requests, the relocation packets that we send out, the vacation packets we send out, and the visitor bags that we put together for groups and, you know, individuals that are having conventions or meetings or whatever here in town. And so it varies a little bit, you know, every year. We are in the process, and we'll start the process this Friday, to upgrade our business system and also our website, that'll be way more interactive and more app-friendly than the one we have now. So that should improve, you know, I'm not one that walks around with a cellphone in my hand all the time, but everybody else in the world does. So it's been noted that our website isn't very app-friendly, and so we're going to embark on that to improve that, so.
I find all websites unfriendly.
Yeah, I do too. Well, you know, of course, most of you know I stood behind a parts counter for 30 years, and I've always said, computers have been forced on me all my life, and I have not liked a minute of it, but I've learned to work with them.
There you are.
So anyhow, because at the dealership, it went all the way from our inventory on index cards to not doing anything without barcoding it, so.
Right.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, PAWS Animal Shelter.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kent.
Just wanted to run through some of our past and upcoming fundraisers, and then Gina's just going to let you know a little bit about what's going on at the shelter itself. Back in August, we did Eclipse t-shirts that turned out to be really, really popular. We sold most of them before the event itself actually happened, and we ended up only getting stuck with one or two left over, so we did pretty good with that, and we made a little over $1,000 just doing t-shirts, plus the time we spent at Dark in the Park, so that turned out to be a worthwhile time for us, we made a little bit additional on top of our t-shirts there. And then just a little less than a month ago, we did our 12th Annual PAWS and Pearls, it's our wine tasting and live and silent auctions. I'm sorry to report, we thought we did pretty well with it, but when we crunched the numbers, this was not our best year. We actually did a little worse than last year, and this was the first time since we've been doing it that we didn't actually crack $40,000 profit, so we kind of got hurt there. But we're going to do a few extra things next year to just kind of make up that shortfall. And so we're planning next year's event, it's always the second Saturday in September, so we've got a year to work on it. And then coming up, we've got just our pasta sales, that we resell pasta for about a month, and that does pretty good for us. And we've got our Santa PaWS and cookie contest coming up November 18th, and I'll get some information to Sean on that, beginning of November, and maybe you can do a little plug for us here, and just kind of help us get the word out.
Sure, you're always welcome to come and talk during, you know, the comments from the floor, you know, and at least those folks that are watching TV are going to hear it, okay?
Agree.
I don't know, it's, it amazes, constantly amazes me, the number of people that, that tell me that they've seen me on TV, so I, they must, people must watch it, they don't have anything to do on Tuesday nights.
And then just to finish out the year, we'll be at our, at the usual craft fairs, we do two or three of those towards the end of the year, after Thanksgiving and before Christmas, and that's, that's kind of fun to just sit there and sell our stuff, and we make a little bit extra money for us and have fun doing it. So that's kind of where we've been and where we'll go through the rest of the year, and then I'll just let Gina let you know a little bit about what's going on at the shelter itself.
Good, thank you.
Good evening. It has, needless to say, been a busy summer for us. When I did our reports, our quarterly reports, we had 185 animals in from July 1st to September 30th. We had 57 cats and 128 dogs. With that, as many of you know, came disease. We started out with distemper in May, we had parvo, we've had mange, and with that, it comes closing. When you close and you disinfect and you clean, you lose program income, there's no adoptions going out. You do have reclamations, but mostly with that many animals, I mean, if you got on to PAWS right now, we are overflowing with cats and dogs. So one of the busiest summers we've ever had, and the one thing that's scary is we still have parvo in the community, so we're really watching. We had a nursery full of puppies, we had four mama dogs dumped within a week of giving birth, that gave us 30 puppies this summer, so not only were we fighting disease, we were taking care of babies too, and trying to keep them safe. We are working with rescue partners and shelters across Wyoming and Utah, but with the hurricanes, they haven't been able to help us like they usually do, so I've got some transport set up for next week, but where we could usually rely on them, we have not been able to. So we had 32 adoptions for dogs during that, those three months, and that's a really low number for us, especially when you have cute cuddly puppies. We still have quite a few, so. We actually had one of our record numbers of reclamations for cats. It's, in our shelter, we see maybe a 1% reclamation rate for cats, and we actually had six that were reclaimed by owners these last three months, so we've enjoyed that, so. But if you know anybody that's looking for a puppy or a cat, please send them our way, we have adoption events set up. Dan McDonald is allowing us to host an adoption event at the Old Radio Shack location on Saturday, from 10 to 2. We're going to be at the Cats Museum on the 14th, from 10 to noon, we're partnering with the Stock Doc. We're going to just do a responsible ownership, the kids that come, they're going to get some, some, a little goodie bag, and some posters, and some, some coloring pages too, so that we'll be handing out for participating in the class, so. Any questions for us?
Does look like it, thank you very much. We'll, we'll take note of the, of the overload of animals, and remind people how important it is that they get their pets neutered, so that they don't continue to reproduce, and if you think about the pressure that that places on our community to try to deal with those animals in a humane way, is, is pretty overwhelming, so thank you.
Vaccinations as well, too, if they're vaccinated, when they come in, that keeps us from having to actually shut down.
Sure, sure.
Distemper, parvo, and mange are all preventable, so.
Yeah, so, so if people are taking care of their, their animals, then it's easier for you to do your job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a debrief on the Eclipse. City Administrator's report, please.
Hello.
Everything, everything must have gone cold while we worked our way through this, huh? There it is.
Tim, if you're out there, Tim?
SOS.
Sitting back there like his laugh nail.
Well, Mayor and Council, this is going to be very short once we get started. Councilman Larson had asked if we were going to debrief after the eclipse, and we did do that. We did it in the form of a breakfast brunch for our employees that worked so hard and so diligently during this event. And at that time, we entertained comments, suggestions, concerns, and, and we did this presentation as well. So for those of you that weren't able to attend that, we had about 60 employees in attendance and some elected officials. And believe it or not, we did not have, as staff, one complaint through the whole event. I think the only concern we heard was people had to wait too long at the bus stop for the WRTA transportation. They would like us to shorten that a little bit. Thank you very much, Tim. So to get this off on a good note, we'd like to share some of the thank yous we received, and I'm going to read this for our viewing audience in case they can't read it from home. "City of Riverton, thank you so much for all the help and support of Exploring the Sun events. We were able to interact with over 300 children and between the mills fed around 1,000 people. You guys were so wonderful to work with. We sincerely appreciate how you went out of your way to be helpful and accommodating to our group. The city did a wonderful job of sprucing up our community. I am proud to live here." Nikki Tippett's on behalf of the Neighborhood Alliance Church. This was another one. "Thank you for letting us be a part of Dark in the Park. Everyone was friendly and helpful. The police were informative and did an excellent job. Again, thank you for a great experience." And this was a tattoo artist that came to our community. This is another one from, they were visitors from Redfeather Lake, Colorado. "On Sunday, we took a walk into Riverton, winding up at Walmart and deciding to turn around there and walk back. We stopped just outside City Hall and sat down to wait for the bus. We waited about a half hour with no results. There was a booth set up outside City Hall offering water. A wonderful lady from the booth walked out to the bus stop and brought us water. We chatted for a few minutes and found that she worked for the city. We were so appreciative. Then about 10 or 15 minutes later, with still no bus in sight, a generous city employee who told us she works in dispatch, her name was Angela Mason, offered us a ride back to our campsite. We gratefully took her up on the offer and were taken right to the gate at the rendezvous. There are two employees of whom you can be very proud. They were gracious, helpful, and generous with their time. Please tell them how much we appreciated the time they took to help us. We won't forget it or the City of Riverton." I thought that was especially commendable. So after the thank yous, here comes reality. The reality is that the expenses that we did encumber for this event, for the transportation, advertising, we conducted the breakfast, and then we also purchased food to accommodate all of our employees while they were eating and leave the booths and leaving where they were stationed to come and have hamburgers or spaghetti or whatever they could have. And I believe the PD spearheaded that most of the time. Thank you very much, PD. We also had safety supplies, canopy rental, and a few other things. So those, those were totaled $7,400. We had some expenses with the portable toilet rentals and installing the temporary waste dump, and that was $8,700 out of the wastewater fund. So the total revenues, the only revenues we received so far, were $2,990 on Dark in the Park. We originally established $14,000 because we had 140 spots, and as you can see, we did not rent that many spots. And I think we just got a late start on that. So the total expenditures were around $16,000, and the difference was $13,000. But don't let that bother you, because really, the good impact is going to come from sales tax dollars that came to our community, and we'll find that out in the next month or two. I really think that's going to boost our sales tax dollars. This was a little different when we looked at, we installed a pay code in our software system so we could tell how many hours our employees worked on the eclipse. So administration and operations like parks, sanitation, all those, we had 871 hours logged on behalf of the city employees. Law enforcement alone, 1,189 hours. Now, this might be a little distorted, because if someone would normally work a 10-hour shift, and correct me if I'm wrong, Captain Byerly, if someone normally worked a 10-hour shift, I understand that the PD worked 12-hour shifts...
That is correct.
...during the eclipse. So it was, since everyone was all hands on deck, it was hard for us to, I distinguished between that was a regular shift or that was eclipse, and so we all just put it, we put it all under eclipse. So don't let that number scare you. We are looking at those salary line items and at overtime to see how we can pull back a little bit, and by the end of the year, hopefully, with a new city administrator, they'll be back in line. That will be test one. So hopefully, that will be helpful to watch it throughout the year. We did a test on law enforcement, I believe, and Kristin, we saw about a 7% increase over this time last year. So really, it wasn't a huge increase when it came to hours with the law enforcement. Looks like a lot, but not totally. This is a picture, the top left-hand picture was by, was from our delegation from Bavaria, Germany, and I'll talk a little bit more about them. The other one, the bottom left-hand one, is out over Boyson, right before the totality. And that's where we were. We were out on a boat on Boyson. And then, of course, this is always interesting to see pictures at the airport and to see how many planes came in. How many employments, Kyle? Or not employments, but planes landed, 100 and...
113 additional general aviation traffic.
Thank you. 113 planes. Again, this is another picture of Boyson, and this is, where was this, Megan? I took it. I don't know where it was. And these are all our wonderful employees and their children helping with Dark in the Park and other places around the community. The city established three information booths, booths to help our visitors to the community as well as all the help we received from Kathy and her group with the Job Corps.
PD came with brochures and maps from me, I think, three different times on that Saturday and Sunday.
Great. So a lot of brochures and maps were picked up by PD and extended to our visitors. There again, oh, this one. If you look, we're in the top right-hand corner, that is Kristin Watson's son, and he sold a majority of the rendezvous pins during that event. He was quite the salesman. Of course, with looks like that, didn't take much. More activities in the park. And then the horses, I couldn't believe it. I've heard that they were always a big draw, but I saw that they were a big draw in the park. People loved them, and wherever they went, they had a trail of children wanting to pet those horses, and it was very unique to Wyoming, I think, to have horses in the park. Our parks employees were overly accommodating. For instance, we had individuals who were hauling things across the park to get to their booth. We had parks employees load up a four-wheeler to help offer them to move their supplies, and were just around all weekend long wanting to help. Again, this is Dark in the Park. I believe this is the day of the eclipse, isn't it? Yes, as you can see how full it is. Maybe we should have extended Dark in the Park through Monday. And more pictures. And of course, this is the highway heading out. This is by Campbell's Corner, and any of you that traveled out that way, you saw constant traffic alongside the road, and then when we came back from Boyson, it took us quite a while to get back because of the traffic. So again, look at all the people that came to see the eclipse in Riverton, Wyoming. This was our Bavarian, Germany delegation. They were scientists, teachers, astronomers. One gentleman, the guy standing in the khaki shorts and the white shirt, was the director of a planetarium, had a lot of equipment. So they brought out all their special telescopes and, to find the right place. Come to find out, some of them went around Casper to view the event, and the other three went Ocean Lake to view the event. And that's where you'll see the pictures from the eclipse. We took them out to the country club to sample some special Wyoming cuisine out there, and they enjoyed that. That was my dime, not the city's. It was nice. It was fun. This is what they call the diamond ring, the one on the left. You can see the first bite out, and these are pictures, again, taken with their special equipment. Aren't these rays just amazing? So the key to our success rests in people like our citizens, our elected officials, our employees, and it was a very amazing event. This is a poster they left that they were passing around in Germany not to view the eclipse through binoculars. And then they shared a picture of an eclipse they took in 2007. Together, this group has been on seven total eclipses throughout the world, and they donated this one to the City of Riverton, which will hang in City Hall. So do you have any questions about the eclipse? Okay.
Looks good. Thanks, Courtney.
Thank you.
The next item of business is the Adoption Ordinance 17-017, third and final reading, street sizes. Would the city clerk please read Ordinance 17-017 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 17-017 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title 16, subdivisions, Chapter 16.16, design standards, Section 16.16.020, streets, alleys, and easements, adding 16.16.020 in street design criteria, and repealing Section 16.24.010, Appendix A, street cross-sections of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-017 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Lance Godey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
A vote aye, motion passes. The next item is the Adoption Ordinance 17-019, third and final reading, incarceration for public intoxication. Would the city clerk please read Ordinance 17-019 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 17-019 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title 9, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, revising Chapter 9.08, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency, Section 9.08.200, Public Intoxication of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-019 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moving the seconded. Any discussion? Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Your Honor, Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lance Godey.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
A vote yes, and the motion passes. The next item is the Adoption of Ordinance 17-020, third and final reading, the Adoption of the National Electrical Code, 2017 edition. Would the city clerk please read Ordinance 17-020 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 17-020 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title 15, Building Construction, Chapter 15.04, Building Construction and Maintenance Codes, Section 15.04.010A10, Adoption, Applicability, Filing of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-020 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moving the seconded. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Lance Godey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
Aye. Motion passes. Adoption Ordinance 17-023, second reading, property maintenance and nuisance abatement. Interim Community Development Director's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The staff, as you can see in the report, we've gone over this and changed it up quite a bit from the first reading to be more definitive in how this chapter's going to be used. And we went away from the code enforcement officer, and we're now into the property maintenance. So we're defining this to, not to be specific, but to give the general guidelines.
Would the city clerk please read Ordinance 17-023 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 17-023 on second reading, and ordinance amending Title 8, Health and Safety, to establish Chapter 8.24, Property Maintenance and Nuisance Abatement of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-023 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moving the seconded. Discussion.
I guess I would just note that this has significant changes from the first reading, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on those, that what we have here is very different from what we had the first time, and I think very good. I had an opportunity to look at this, and I think it really does capture what we're after. I think one of the things we talked about last meeting was the idea of notice. And the new 8.24.060 has discussion about the form of notice, and I think it clarifies things much better than what we had before. I think then, now, as we go forward and make the changes we've been discussing with the individual ordinances, the vehicle ordinance, for example, abandoned vehicles or the debris ordinance, that we can just make reference to notice here, for example, in 8.24.060, rather than having to break it out separately or anything like that. I still would note that I think, you know, one of the things we had discussed last time was that we're going to have different methods of notice that can be used, rather than just applying every single time on some sort of, you know, certified letter, that we can, before we do that, have notice such as what we have here with the...
070.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the wrong one. Method of service, I was in the wrong one. Where, you know, 070A4, you know, talking about just putting it at a conspicuous place there. I still think in terms of due process, when we get to that point where we'd be getting the court involved, that we would probably want to make reference to specifically the need for a certified mail notice. But I think this is good, because it still provides that this is notice that's official, that's from the city, that you need to abate the nuisance, so. Anyway, I think it addresses a lot of what we talked about last time and difficulties that I was having with what we were discussing, so I think it's good.
Your Honor, I couldn't agree more and appreciate the tons of extra work to kind of expand and really clarify all the new parts. It really does an excellent job, I think, in leading... It really does an excellent job, I think, in leading the charge on several of the individual ordinances that I'm sure are coming down the pike. So, very much, very much in favor.
Okay, so I just have a procedural question. Do we have to actually amend what we passed last time or by simply adopting this second reading, we've, we're doing that?
Your Honor, I believe you can just adopt it as amended.
Okay, all right.
And, Your Honor, if I may say one thing.
Go right ahead.
The first, as you can, I didn't want to lose the placement of that ordinance because once you use that ordinance number, you can't replace it. You have to, it's gone forever. So, all the strike-throughs were me from last time, and I believe in giving credit where credit is due, this version is Rosie Albright's work. And I'd like to share that she's the one that found this code. I was looking at City of Laramie and a couple of other codes. She found this one with the City of Douglas. So, if this is a type of work they do, then you're getting a good city administrator.
Good.
Yes.
Terrific.
Yes.
At least some of our code will be familiar to him, right?
Yes, absolutely. So, thank Mrs. Albright.
Good, thank you.
So, where the motion has been just to adopt this on second reading, I would think we need to make clear that we're adopting this with the amendments on second reading so that we've got a clear record as to what we're doing. So I guess I'd say I move that we adopt proposed ordinance seventeen zero two three as amended on second reading.
I would accept that as a...
Okay, so Lance, Lance said it. Lance, Lance moved and we're going to adjust that a little bit to say as amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and Tim seconded it. All right, and so, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Next item is public hearing and consideration of ordinance seventeen dash zero two four, first reading, off-street parking. Interim Community Development Directors, report please. I feel like I've missed something.
Your Honor, this is to discuss...
Okay.
Sorry, I need to get a update. We on zero two four?
Yeah, yeah, we're on zero two four.
Okay, Your Honor, this is a portion of the code that we no longer use and so that's why we're trying to clean up the code. Mr. Hancock and I discussed in, before the meeting today, we have one typo and that is in section where we say that it conflicts with Section fifteen dot zero four dot zero two zero. Actually should be seventeen dot zero four dot zero two zero. Whoops. This is a part of the code where we don't use the National Building Index any longer and it also referenced back to the 1981. So we're just trying to clarify and clean up that section of the code.
Your Honor, the agenda doesn't match the packet, or the contents of the packet, I think is your...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm having a... So what I read and what I'm seeing here on my script aren't matching up.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
The agenda is off-street parking.
Yeah, that's correct.
And that may just be me.
What?
It just, it may just be me.
Public hearing.
So...
But that's the ordinance is off-street parking. So...
Okay.
If it was in the off-street parking where it says non-conforming uses, that's the problem.
Correct, Your Honor. It's in the wrong section.
Oh.
So...
What he's saying.
Yeah, so I mean...
We're still on item fifteen. We're still on item fifteen.
And it is seventeen dash zero two four.
Okay.
Your Honor, we have a parking topic that is not, does not belong in the building and zoning. And so that's why we're amending it out of there.
Okay, I got it.
I was confused.
Okay, okay.
I was confused.
All right.
I'm with the mayor on that, I was confused.
Okay, so I keep looking at this and I keep thinking, well, what, what does this have to do with parking? And I, and I see it doesn't have anything to do with parking.
And the problem is, is it has nothing to do with parking. That's the problem.
That's correct.
That's why we're taking it out.
Okay, with the, okay, so maybe, maybe what I need to do is have the city clerk read ordinance seventeen dash zero two four by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number seventeen dash zero two four and ordinance amending Title fifteen, Buildings and Construction, Chapter fifteen point three six, Off-Street Parking Requirements, repealing Section fifteen point three six point zero eight zero, Existing Non-Conforming Uses of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Okay, so the Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved, Your Honor.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing to be opened. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Your Honor, seeing as no one's coming forward, I recommend that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moving the seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the public hearing is now closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero two four on first reading.
So moved.
Moving the seconded, discussion? Tim?
Your Honor, I'm just, and we actually, Mr. Paskett and I started talking about this just a little bit before we started the meeting and I, I hadn't quite, I guess, reached a resolution as to my thought here. The whole idea is this is in the Buildings and Construction portion of our code. This is where we're talking about Building Construction Maintenance Codes. And the issue is that the, for whatever reason, under off-street parking requirements is where we put that lawful use of a building existing on November seventeenth, nineteen eighty-one, or authorized by a building permit issued prior thereto may be continued although such use does not conform with the provisions of this chapter. And so it's basically saying if you've had something going on that you had like a building permit for before this date, which is I assume when we first passed it, that you grandfathered in. So, for whatever reason, that was placed in off-street parking and that's one of the biggest concerns about it is the location. It makes no sense to have it there. The code that they had, that Mr. Paskett had indicated would still capture the same idea is seventeen oh four oh two oh. And I guess the only issue I'm having with this is, is seventeen oh four oh two oh is talking about zoning and not specifically just Building Construction and Maintenance. Additionally, it, rather than making reference to that specific date, it makes reference Looking at it real quick. Prior to the effective date of the ordinance codified in this chapter, which is, I'm not sure when seventeen oh four oh two oh was passed. But I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about just getting rid of it completely. I would think it might make sense, rather than just getting rid of it completely, to do the same thing that we did with the streets and get rid of it in this section and put it instead perhaps as a new, and I'm just throwing it out there, put it in fifteen oh four, which is Building Construction Maintenance Codes, something like fifteen oh four oh six oh or something, because it ends at L five oh. So I guess I just wanted to have some discussion about that. Any thoughts, Mr. Paskett or...
Councilwoman Hancock, are you on ordinance twenty-four?
Man, if I'm not, I'm going to be frustrated with myself. Yes, that's where I am. I'm in the right spot.
Yeah.
For once.
That's what the first five minutes was about. Everybody was thought they were in the wrong spot.
A little bit of background, before Mrs. Lures left, we looked up non-conforming uses and when we put, when we did a search on your municipal code, off-street parking came up. And that's when she determined that that was a wrong place for that and that it was addressed in another part of the code. I don't have my notes with me right now, but I would be happy to include that in the report or let you know tomorrow. But it was her recommendation to repeal that and take it out of that section.
And my point is, it is addressed in another place in the code. But it's addressed in zoning and it doesn't, it's not the exact wording. You're talking about a different date here. So, zoning has non-conforming uses and that's where we had the discussion about the typo being there. It was fifteen dot oh four dot zero two zero is what was written, but it's actually seventeen. And that's where I'm, I guess my point is, is I don't want to create issues with people that have relied on the idea of my construction has been since before nineteen eighty-one. And I don't have to conform with some of these different things recently and I just don't see that really being captured in seventeen oh four oh two oh. So my point is, it seems rather than just getting rid of it completely and saying, we've got what we need in the zoning, it would make sense to get rid of it and move it, because that's the whole issue that we, that started this, is it's in off-street parking, which makes no sense. Get rid of it there and move it and have an ordinance that would create and have the same ordinance there in fifteen oh four, anyway, whichever one it is, the, the beginning of the building code maintenance.
Your Honor, I believe one of the reasons that we did take this out as well, and I understand what you're saying, you want to repeal and replace. This is repealing it. One reason we wanted to repeal it was because it was under the National Building Index, which is no longer used by the city at all. So I think we looked at that generally and just removed it. So we can look for another spot for that to go in for the next reading.
And I guess the only other thing is, is, I, I mean, I agree, if we're not using that and that's, that's something that we're not using in terms of making a determination as to...
Let's move it.
Because it makes reference to it in terms of being able to say, provided such addition, alteration or repair does not exceed twenty-five percent of the value, and, and makes reference to the value being determined by the International Conference of Building Officials. I, I think we could consider getting, taking that out or something.
Yes.
But I guess, and, and so I think we could look at that for another reading, but that's just my concern. I, I don't want to have things that have been constructed before the date there that all of a sudden, because we repeal this, they lose their status as having been grandfathered in, so to speak.
I see.
And so I think, you know, the idea was when we looked at that, or when Ms. Lures looked at it, that it's like, well, we have non-conforming uses in zoning, but it's worded just a little bit different and I don't think we rely to the same buildings because this is making reference to the date of the ordinance codified here and not to that nineteen eighty-one date.
I see. So, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
You could certainly table this ordinance and we'll bring it back up, or you could pass it and we'll make the amendment for the second reading to remove and replace.
Which pleasure, we've got a motion on the floor to adopt it and we could, go ahead.
I would move that we table this.
Second.
Been moving the seconded that we table it. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's been tabled. Bring it up next two weeks, right? The next item of business is public hearing and consideration ordinance seventeen dash zero two five, first reading. Title seventeen revision, interim community development directors, report please.
Your Honor, during the planning commission meeting, we, the planning commission recommended that we allow multifamily dwellings to exist in R two because when the ordinance was changed, it limited it to two family dwellings only. There's a number by the map that we have shows a number of multifamily dwellings greater than two that exist in the R two zone. Their concern is that in the event of a fire or something, that that structure by the zoning could not be rebuilt. So what we're proposing to amend here is to allow the non-conforming use in the event of that catastrophe, that they could be rebuilt in that same footprint with the same number of living units and be an allowed use in R two.
Okay, would the city clerk please read ordinance seventeen dash zero two five by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number seventeen dash zero two five on first reading and ordinance amending Title seventeen, zoning, revising Chapter seventeen point three two, R two residential district, Sections seventeen point three two point zero one zero A, uses of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moving the seconded to open public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this topic?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would recommend, move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moving the seconded to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero two five on first reading.
Your Honor, make a motion that we adopt seventeen zero two five on first reading.
Second.
Sean?
So just, are you representing? Didn't we have this meeting before with, when we went back there and sat with the zoning? I just want to make sure that this has been through...
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, all that stuff. And I, I know we have a representative here, so is there...
Your Honor, I will not be representing the public, or the planning commission, is someone out of pocket, I believe.
Ken, are you here to represent, you're here to represent the planning commission?
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Okay, all right. So we have, we have a representative here.
Okay, any, I just want to make sure this has been, because I know that's what happened last time and they, they wanted to make sure this was done before we moved forward, so I just want to make sure that this has been through the planning commission and there they put their two cents in on it.
Your Honor, this has been before the planning commission. This was their recommendation. So this is what we wanted to move forward with and that's why the planning commission's here, in the event that they wanted to speak on behalf of this, they had a representative here. So, this was taken right from the minutes as, as they had proposed it.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Council committee reports and council members roundtable, Ms. Gibbon?
The only thing that I have to report on is that the school district twenty-five recreation board met and paid bills last night and that I just need to tell everybody that had applications in at the beginning of the year, that they need to make sure that they get any of their invoices in for December because they have to have them in this year in order for those to be paid. That's it.
Ms. Peterson, anything for us tonight?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Larson?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey? I don't have anything either. Mr. Hancock?
Yes, Your Honor, but I don't want to step on Mr. Godey's toes because we went to the same barbecue and I, I was actually sitting here thinking, I hope that they go, that we go in order from Mr. Godey to me so I don't feel like I'm stealing his thunder.
Take the thunder. Take the thunder.
Take the thunder and I'm, okay, and please note my attire.
Yes, very representative.
Okay.
And I, I wore a purple tie today.
You have a purple tie and...
Dang.
Okay.
Yeah, you missed it out.
Okay.
Missed the trend and I think both of our PAWS representatives were wearing purple, I noticed, so...
Yeah, so, okay. And you've got a ribbon on? Okay, so we're, so you're qualified to speak and I'm qualified to listen.
So, I won't, I'll, I'll try to leave... So, I won't, I'll, I'll try to leave something for Mr. Godey. But I had the opportunity to go to the barbecue that they had, that the Fremont County Alliance Against Domestic Violence held on the 28th. Good opportunity, good food. I, I was gonna share something funny, but I don't think I will anymore. But there was someone who was arrested there, who, right before he was arrested, came up and gave me a couple of hugs. And the chief could probably tell you about that, Captain Byerly. It was fairly humorous. But anyway, I occasionally get hugs from intoxicated people before they get arrested in the park. It's a new experience for me. But the point of it was that October, of course, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's a time that you're gonna be seeing a lot of purple around. We've got the purple tree. That's the color that's meant to be for domestic violence awareness. And so, without getting into too many details of the barbecue, so Mr. Godey can talk about that, I will mention something about domestic violence. And one of the things I want to do is, the Fremont County Alliance actually has a webpage, and they give a lot of different resources for people who may be victims of domestic violence, or might be familiar with people who are victims of domestic violence. And one of the, one of the things that we have available in our community is actually a shelter. They were behind a lot of the different things that we were doing at the barbecue. We, and one of the websites actually talks about things that you can do to prevent domestic violence where you live. There's 10 of them. I'm not gonna read them all. But I just want to bring this up, because domestic violence affects so many different people in our community in a negative way. And it, and I'll be honest with you, it's one of the most disturbing things to see, somebody who's a victim of a crime that says they don't want to prosecute the person who committed it. I deal with crime all the time, and the kinds of crimes that I see, where most often you're gonna hear people say, I don't want to prosecute him, is domestic violence. And it's because what happens mentally, when you become a victim of someone you love, it just messes with your mind. I don't have any other way to put it. And so, you have this incredible thing where people are getting hurt by the people they love the most, and they're saying, I don't want to prosecute. And they're the kind of people that need to be prosecuted. But, so, what can we do as a community to help prevent domestic violence? I just wanted to mention some of these. One of the things they say is, don't ignore it. And I think that's important. As citizens, if we hear or see something going on, and we know that somebody's being hurt, we need to let the police know. It might be end up that it doesn't go anywhere. We experience that all the time, but at least we can go and we can say we did something about it. So, if you see something happen, and you're concerned about somebody being hurt, I think one of the most important things is to make sure you say you report it. Another thing that they mentioned is to make sure you're available. If you know that someone is in fear of violence, be available to talk to them and give them information regarding resources. And we've got a great program here. You can access a lot of resources just online. Just search Fremont County Alliance Domestic Violence. It has a lot of different things on their website. The other thing that it mentions is if you know someone is a victim, be checking in regularly with them. If you know someone is dealing with a relationship where they are a victim of domestic violence, one of the biggest things you can do to help them is to be talking with them regularly. Lend a listening ear, let them know you're there. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to mention. And it's a subject that's a bit near and dear to my heart, because I deal with it on a regular basis as a prosecutor. But I hope that we don't squander this opportunity to help people understand just how domestic violence affects people in our community. They're your friends, they're your neighbors, everything. And hopefully, we can do things to try to combat it. And these are just a few ideas, but I definitely applaud the efforts in getting the word around. Thank you.
Mr. Godey?
Yeah, the only, I think, thing I would add, I had the opportunity in honor of representing the city to sign the proclamation kicking off Domestic Violence Awareness Month for the month of October. And so, that was, that was a great opportunity for me. We had all had an opportunity, the chief, myself, and Tim had an opportunity to say a few words and, and just kind of reinforce some of the support that the, the city has for observance of and, and awareness of domestic violence. So, I couldn't say it any better than my thunder stealer here, so...
Good. Mike?
And they are, I think, going to have a ball at the Holiday Inn on the 14th also.
Yes.
Another fundraising event.
Correct. So, that's the first, yeah.
Purple ball.
The purple ball.
First annual.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys, for attending that. On behalf of the city, I'm, I'm sorry that I couldn't make it, but I've gone in the past and enjoyed it and, and think they do good work, so... City administrators report?
Yes, Your Honor, the work session next week will cover snow removal.
Snow removal?
Yes.
I'll be darned.
I announced that on the radio Monday morning and encouraged our citizens to attend or listen in if they have any concerns or other ideas. We'd be happy to entertain those. Secondly, I wanted to address Mr. Dockham when he was here talking about removing snow on the sidewalk. I can tell by the prior code of Section 23-5 that this ordinance that's currently on the books, probably in the late 1950s to the 70s. That's the last time this was addressed. It shall be the duty of the occupant in order, if the premises are not occupied, of any premises within the limits of the city to keep the sidewalks abutting any part of such premises free from accumulation of snow, ice, mud, waste, and offensive material, papers, and trash, and to remove the same with reasonable dispatch. This is not an ordinance I will be bringing forth. I think 25 will do it for me for a year, but I'd be happy to pass this on. But we do have an ordinance on the books for that.
We do have, we do have an ordinance on the books, and, and so our challenge is to, to somehow enforce that on a, on a consistent and fair basis.
Yes.
That's, that's the challenge. So, and that's it, huh, for, okay?
Yes.
So, well, okay, so I'm, I'm grateful that we have a city administrator who is headed our way. And have we spent any time thinking about a party?
We have.
Have you? You have a date in mind yet?
We do. Mr. Tolstad and I have been talking weekly. In fact, I just received an email from him while I'm sitting in the council meeting tonight, and we're going to be talking tomorrow. We have discussed October 30th.
Okay.
He's with the City of Douglas until the 25th of October, and the 30th would work well for him.
Okay.
So, I think that's the date we're gearing towards if it is a good date for the council.
Okay.
And that would be a citywide meet and greet.
I told the mayor the other day, if you let me know in particular, so I'll get it out there.
Perfect.
So, there it is.
Perfect.
That's a Monday night?
It is a Monday night.
We're not gonna do it on the 31st and have some combined Halloween...
Halloween thing.
Welcome to the city administrator.
For anti-Halloween people, that was not even an option.
Okay.
Not gonna have kids come and trick or treat to the city administrator for handy.
Well, thank you. We don't need an executive session? Oh, boy.
Nice.
Okay, and the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 8:50.
Just worried for a minute there that our motion...